Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town Council meeting for November 20th, two days before Thanksgiving. A lot of people must be home cooking. I'm going to call a meeting to order. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Christopher?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the board.
Councilman Amen, Councilwoman Cowell, Councilperson Christopher, Councilwoman Terry, Councilwoman Soto, Councilwoman McDuffie, Councilwoman LeFanti.
Present.
Vice President Von Cory.
Here.
President Beckia.
Present. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the November 13th meeting of the Town Council. Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. We have three public hearings. Prior to the public hearing, I'll ask the Chairman of Finance to just give us an overview for these three public hearings that we're going to hold real quick.
We're going to hold three public hearings. They all have to do with free cash. The Town Council has a policy that it's had for several years where when free cash is certified, we have 30 percent of the free cash goes into the General Stabilization Fund, 40 percent of the free cash goes into the Capital Stabilization Fund, 10 percent of the free cash goes into a Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund, but that is capped at $300,000. And then we replenish the council reserve up to $100,000 if need be. And the rest of the money is available for the town's discretion. So we will be having three public hearings on the three motions we discussed tonight in Finance.
Okay, the first public hearing is open. We transfer $512,866.40 from free cash to the Capital Stabilization Fund, Town Council policy. Anyone wish to be heard? Anyone on the council?
Council President, the Finance Committee met this evening. We actually had positive action on all three of these motions. The first motion for the Capital Stabilization, that will bring the Capital Stabilization balance to $1,462,471.62 if passed.
Okay. Anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing none, I'll close out that public hearing. The next one is to transfer $384,648.9 from free cash to General Stabilization Fund, Town Council policy. Anyone wish to be heard? Hearing none, I'll close out that hearing. Next one, public hearing to transfer $45,650 from free cash to replenish the Town Council Reserve. Anyone wish to be heard?
Again, that was, came out of Finance with a positive recommendation, and the council reserve will be replenished up to $100,000. And Council President, there was one that we overlooked in the public hearing that we will have to, I'm going to ask Denise to advertise for the next meeting, and that's the transfer $102,499.13 from free cash to building stabilization, which will, which is not quite the 10 percent that is the council policy, however, it will bring it up to the $300,000 threshold that we have allotted ourselves. So that, we accounted for the numbers and the balance in free cash, but we did not have the motion ready, so I will ask Denise to advertise after the next meeting.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing none, I'll close out that portion of the public hearing. Public comment. Anybody wish to be heard?
Hi, Dr. Von Corry. I have a little comment before you come over here that I want to comment on, so obviously that rumor has been going around about some Massport money given to the town, and I just really want to advocate for, you know, I highly compel you to be sure that there's a person helping to distribute the money that will look at mitigation for the impacts that Logan Airport has. Air pollution, travels in plumes, so we don't know exactly where it goes in town, but I can tell you that it comes to my house. I have air monitoring testing going on right now, not only from the landings and the take offs, but also from when the wind is west. All of the pollution from the runway activities come to Point Shirley. And I'm actually having Tufts University and BU right now collate that data for me from Halloween through that Sunday, because people were on the beach getting headaches from the pollution. So I saw that there's, you know, some sort of mention of the impacts from the airport, but, you know, we need to really know what that is. And then, you know, the sound is something that everybody knows, but a new study just came out that closely correlates hypertension and like three times as many heart attacks for people who live at the airport. And there's no correlation between whether or not the airplane noise bothers you or not. So like if someone's like, oh, I don't mind the noise, I can sleep through it, whatever, your body still hears it. So anyway, I just really advocating to have Nick or myself or someone from the Air Hazards Committee be involved, because there might be need for internal home, you know, air filtration and other things, because whether or not we want to address the study, this air pollution testing is going, is being done by Olin College of Engineering independently, but also the Tufts and BU people are at the table with Massport, so Massport's aware of this study. It's a trend throughout the country to study ultrified particles from air pollution. So like whether or not we advance this cause here, it's a cause that's being advanced throughout the country. So at some point, it's data we're going to have to face anyway, so that's my pitch for making sure that mitigation of health impacts from the airport are addressed with the money. I understand we have a lot of money needs, but that's an important one, I hope we don't overlook.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, Julia Wallers, Precinct Two. I know you guys have missed me. It's been a while since I've been to a council meeting, so she wanted to come say hi. No, also, just, I guess picking up from where Don left off, I want to, I was very excited. I've been sort of reading through the notes and trying to play catch-up from these last few months on what's been going on with town business. And I'm really thrilled to see that the pilot tax has been renegotiated and like really taking seriously the amount of mitigation that the town gets from Massport. So I want to thank, you know, President Beckia and our new Town Manager and everyone who worked, and Senator Von Cory who worked to make that happen. And I do also want to piggyback on what Don said and hope that there's really a focus on Point Shirley. I'm sure you've seen the chatter on Facebook and heard from people the enormous impact that people are getting out there. And I mean, my heart goes out to them. It's a quality of life issue, it's a health issue, so I hope that that's part of the conversation, that that soundproofing really gets put back into that conversation. So thank you on that, I know that's later on the agenda. Just as, on a personal note, I want to also commend you on tasking the Town Manager with coming up with a couple options for a Human Rights Commission. That's very exciting, as you know, that's something that individually and as part of One Winthrop, a lot of people in town have been hoping to see, as a way of really confirming and upholding Winthrop as an inclusive community that celebrates diversity and also handles any discrimination issues as they come up, before they become problematic or costly for the town. So I'm really looking forward to seeing what the Town Manager comes up with for that and ensure conversations there. Last thing is just to give you a heads-up, on behalf of the Transportation Advisory Committee, which I still chair, we've been in the process of coming up with a list of priorities and things that we hope to be tasked with by you all in 2019, and I'll be making a longer presentation about that on the December 18th, I believe. It's supposed to be tonight, but with the full forum, that's just too much, so all the more time to prepare. But in the meantime, if you have suggestions or ideas, things that you would like our committee to focus on, please contact, please email them to me, and I can put that in, you know, flesh it out a little bit more right now. We have everything from, you know, signage approving signage, to addressing our Complete Streets policy, to safe routes to schools, so, but I want to make sure these are things that resonate with you all. So that's an open door invitation for that. And one little thing on this agenda, I saw just today that there's a motion about lowering the speed limit on, to 25 in just one particular part of town. That's fantastic, I hope that that actually opens the conversation to do that town-wide. 25 save lives, you might have heard that, a lot of towns in the area, including Boston and Cambridge, did recently lower their municipal speed limits to 25. It literally does save lives. The chance of surviving a crash at 40 miles per hour is 1 in 10, 30 miles per hour, 5 in 10, 20 miles per hour, 9 in 10. So this is really a public safety, quality of life issue, and it would be fantastic if Winthrop were to, I know this is just for one part of town, but to use that as an opportunity to open it up 25 miles per hour for the whole town of Winthrop, especially with the increased amount of bikes that we have on the street now, hopefully more children walking, it's just a great, great thing to do for the town. And also to open the door to possibly becoming a Division Zero community. More on that later. So thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Yes, Chief?
Thank you, speaking as a citizen, Precinct Six, Senator Delahanty. I would urge the council to put forward their motions and accept the mitigation, the form I'm carrying, it's a very good package, and certainly I hope to consider some of that money for public safety purposes. The radios that we have are about 13 years old, Home and Security is not renewing the grant money for portable radios or cruiser radios. The last batch was wired to a Home and Security. It's important to also recognize Massport for their willingness to reopen, which they didn't have to reopen any agreement, they had seven years left on their current agreement. And I think it's, you know, for us to say anything, we need more at this particular point, might give us absolutely nothing. So it's always that balancing point, where I think some people in the community probably think we deserve more, and some people think that this might be a good deal. So it's up to you to balance that, but I would urge that, consider that, the fact that they don't have to open, they didn't have to open, and they were forthcoming and willing to do that with the assistance of the elected officials here locally, as well as our state representatives. So thank you, and have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. We're pleased to have with us this evening a distinguished Senator, Joseph Von Cory.
Mr. President, thank you for having me. Good evening to the councils, to the manager, and to our new Assistant Town Manager. Congratulations, we know one another, it is absolutely a wonderful eye, Mr. Manager. So looking forward to working with all of you in the future. Happy to have with us here tonight also is Speaker, the host, Bob DeLeo's Chief of Staff, Seth Cattell, who I think you'll hear from shortly. But I just want to, I come forward to speak to two issues that you'll vote on tonight, separate issues, one being the Massport pilot payment, the second being the establishment of the Winthrop Foundation. I think it's important that we separate those two issues in our minds and in a vote, because the Massport pilot issue is really, is a payment via taxes. It's a payment that was negotiated back in 2005, I guess, to be a 20-year term, and at $900,000 a year adjusted to CPI. Obviously, the economy didn't do so well thereafter, and we really got no adjustment having to do with CPI, so we spent $900,000 since then. And I wasn't privy to those negotiations, according to that contract, so I really can't speak to that. What I can say is, looking backwards, it's a pretty raw deal for the citizens of Winthrop. You know, we have an opportunity, a rare opportunity, within that contract period to renegotiate, and we have renegotiated, and bringing to you really, and a new contract to vote on. And this contract would go to the same term, 2025, so the term of the contract hasn't changed. What has changed is the payment via taxes that will be made. And that'll be bumped up $150,000 each year, except for this year on the front end, the payment will be $1.1 billion, which is the first increase we've had since 2005. And then it'll be increased to $150,000 per year till 2025. And that's our payment for the land that Massport sits on in Winthrop. And I think it's really an incredible opportunity with the leadership of Speaker DeLeo and your Town Manager, and previous Town Manager, Terry Delahanty. We were beginning, we were able to start that conversation. We had an opportunity with the CEO of Massport leaving, and quite honestly, they do intermingle, because when we had established the Winthrop Foundation, I thought we were going to establish the Winthrop Foundation at $2.5 million to deal with mitigation, and that's mitigation, and that's tied to the expansion of Terminal E. We really heard from the Town Council, members of the Town Council, we heard from members of the public, that really the pilot wasn't high enough. And they were right. So using, you know, as you did not accept the foundation previously, Massport was concerned as to why. To be honest and accurate as the conversation was, you know, we essentially, at the State House, said to Massport, well, we don't feel that this pilot is high enough. And we feel we got a pretty bad deal, and we want to renegotiate the pilot, and, you know, not, they're not related, but that's how we would begin to look at the foundation. So we were able to start that conversation. The Winthrop Foundation is separate, like I said, that's a $2.5 million mitigation package for the expansion of Terminal E. And to address some of the other issues that are, that I'm hearing tonight, those are issues that we're currently working on, we're currently talking to our Congressional delegation to go to the FAA for further sound mitigation, you know, for the, for the meters that measure air particulates in the point and really throughout the town. These are things that we're going to need to continue to work on. And Massport's not going anywhere, so we're going to continue to have that conversation with Massport, and when we're finding out mass information, we're going to be able to go back to them. It's also, you know, this is, if we, if you accept this money today, it's important to point out that we'll have a renegotiation in 2025, and we'll have a new floor to negotiate from, for this community. So I want you to think about that and take that very seriously. Because if we don't accept it, we just don't accept it, and we just get $900,000 going forward. And the Winthrop Foundation is a five-year agreement that we can begin to have that negotiation on in five years, so even short of the seven years, we're always going to have an opportunity to negotiate with Massport. Hopefully, the next time we negotiate a pilot, it won't be for 20 years, and we can have that conversation, you know, more regularly with Massport. But, you know, as in most things with this town, we have an opportunity to set this, you know, agreement and set this friendship, if you will, with Massport on the right track. And I think it's time we do that. I'd really look to you guys to accept this money. You know, there was some political capitalist sentiment by, by some people, and I think it's, it's a good thing for the town. And we can begin to build this town and talk to Massport and have this conversation more regularly. And I really hope that this money will be accepted tonight. These two motions will be taken tonight, voted on favorably. I just want to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator.
I'm Mr. President, Seth Cattell, Chief of Staff, the Speaker DeLeo. I'm just here on behalf of the Speaker to let you and everyone know that this is something that the Speaker's been working on for quite a long time. More than a year ago, he began to really feel that the amount that Winthrop perceived, that the current agreement wasn't equitable, that he felt like, given the growing economy and the activity at Massport, that there needed to be more, felt like it needed to be more fair for the town. It's something he's been very focused on, worked in partnership with Senator Von Cory and other town leaders, and he's very glad to see that there is an increase in funding. He's also pleased to see that the increase in certainty in the town's receiving of these payments. He's hopeful for what this arrangement means for the Winthrop Foundation and the town, and he looks forward to, if possible, positive action on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing none, we'll go to Councilmembers. If you don't have any, committee retreats, we'll put our finance and show old business. Town Managers, you got it?
Sure, so, fall forum tonight, which I'm going to present to Don. Moving forward, in the first meeting in December.
We will have our assessor here concerning setting up the tax rate, which is something good to look forward to. Once the minutes are certified from tonight, I can enter into contract with Open Gov, so we can, we've already kind of started our budgeting process, but we can get moving with that piece of technology that I was looking for. Otherwise, we're happy that there's a little bit of a break here for the staff to kind of recharge their batteries. And even though there's a low in December, in terms of government work, there's a few key things that we have. Water bills come up due on December 3rd, the 5th we'll set the tax rate, and then from there, there's a few other water-related things that we need to work on, but it's also whether we're going to be working on the budget in terms of that.
That's all I really got. And Dave's here, Anna starts, uh, next week. Dave Rodriguez is right here, he's the new Assistant Town Manager. I am, like the Senator said, very happy to have him here, and we're lucky to have him here. And everyone who's interested in any project happening in town, no, he's one, not in every project, but some of these development work and Center Business District and things like that, Dave is going to be running point on some of those things.
Thank you. Next item is the School Department update. School Committee met last night. We had a presentation by CASA, which is the same presentation that the council had last week. We also had a presentation by Zonta International Club of Chelsea. It's an organization that actually gives money for Winthrop, to Winthrop needy residents and so forth, and they were pitching to get more people involved from Winthrop than that organization. We also had a presentation by Select Solar Company regarding the proposing to put solar panels on the new middle high school. And finally, the, the school committee did vote favorable action to have those panels installed, and that will be a project that will be started shortly. Under Old Business, the next four items under Old Business, I'll refer to the Finance Committee. Chairman?
Thank you, Council President. I have four motions coming out of Finance, all with positive recommendation. The first motion is as follows: I move that the Town Council vote to transfer $512,886.40 from free cash to Capital Stabilization Fund in accordance with Town Council policy or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion has been made, no second is necessary, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call. Roll call. And all three.
Councilwoman Cowell, you're, Councilperson Christopher, Councilwoman Terry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Soto.
Yes.
Councilwoman McDuffie.
Yes.
Councilwoman LeFanti.
Yes.
Vice President Von Cory.
Yes.
Yes.
Second motion, I move that the Town Council vote to transfer $384,664.80 from free cash to General Stabilization Fund in accordance with Town Council policy or take any other action relative thereto.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Ringman, Councilwoman Cowell, Councilperson Christopher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Terry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Soto.
Yes.
Councilwoman McDuffie.
Yes.
Vice President Von Cory.
Yes.
Vice President Beckia.
Yes.
Third motion, I move that the Town Council vote to transfer $45,650 from free cash to replenish the Town Council Reserve or take any other action relative thereto.
Out of committee, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Ringman, Councilwoman Cowell. Yes. Councilperson Christopher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Terry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Soto.
Yes.
Councilwoman McDuffie.
Yes.
Vice President Von Cory.
Yes.
Vice President Beckia.
Yes. You have the board vote.
No, but this is our motion, I don't know if that motion is from Terry Delahanty. As a matter of fact, I can make a prediction.
Town Council moves that we transfer $11,700 from Special Revenue Insurance COA Council of Aging to fund town's portion of the MassDOT Transit Grant, or take any other action relative thereto.
That was favorable. Any discussion on the motion?
Just for clarification, that is taking money for the, enabling Council of Aging to get into an agreement with a new van. It is coming from a special revenue account that was generated from insurance money that had come in.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. We've got a table, the establishment of DPW reporting workflow until the next meeting. Town Council introduce a new ordinance to change the speed limit to 25 miles per hour. Councilwoman LeFanti.
Thank you, Council President. So let me walk you through the situation here. So it's true that there are speed limit signs posted on TAFSAF currently that only, that sort of give a speed limit at 20 miles per hour. However, there is no corresponding ordinance on the books for that speed limit, and therefore, even though the signs say that, the default speed limit is in fact 30 miles per hour on TAFSAF. The town of Winthrop is empowered to lower the speed limit as low as 25 miles per hour without state approval or going through a state process. So therefore, I would like to lower the speed limit on TAFSAF from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. I know we're thinking about looking at this more holistically throughout the town in the near future, but I think this is one area of town, considering that it is on the Deer Island Truck Route, that sort of can't wait for that larger discussion. And I will make a motion to reduce the speed limit on TAFSAF to 25 miles per hour by declaring the street to be a thickly settled area, or take any other action thereto.
Motion has been made, do I have a second?
I'll second it for discussion, but I'd like to refer to TSAC and let Chief Delahanty speak on this.
I would urge the council to maybe amend this motion where it's not just TAFSAF, which the truck route extends to, and actually take it from Delby's. In Shirley Street to TAFSAF, Elliot, TAFSAF, the entire stretch, which is the primary concern in the 20 mile an hour speed limit signs currently have. We've gone back in the old minutes of select meetings and contacted the DPW of State, there's no evidence that the proper procedure will follow to lower the speed limit to 20, so the office cannot write a ticket for an illegally posted sign. So 30 is the default speed limit there. If we wanted to go to 20, we'd have to do a traffic engineering study with the DPW from the state to actually drop it to 20 if we chose to do that. The quickest route to do it is through the mechanism the council's suggesting, to just exercise your rights under Municipal Organization Act and lower it to 25, and at least gives us an enforcement option immediately to address some of the speeding cars.
Okay, so you want it amended to go all the way to Delby's Corner?
Yes, that's currently where the 20 mile an hour signs start, about 1 block. But the front end of that Shirley Street from Moore to Delby's block is very congested. You get parking on both sides, and we're a reactive store business district there, so we don't see why we shouldn't extend it at least up to Delby's, which would stop the 20 mile, 25 mile an hour zone, excuse me, from the speaking. I did do a traffic analysis, accident history. We got two accidents lower on Shirley Street stretch between 500 block and 1100 block than we had last year, but we're averaging about 14 accidents in that stretch of roadway. And TAFSAF, three prior years had zero accidents, this year we had two accidents. So when we're adjusting speed limits, we always look at the accident history, the width of the road, how the road is being used in certain areas, and then of course, the enforcement comes on top of that, so.
Okay, so the amendment would be to add from all the way to Shirley and Washington Avenue?
That's correct. Surely, the intersection of Shirley, Washington District is here.
Okay, but we have to, to move to the ordinance, or? Does this have to go to the ordinance?
TSAC is a favorite.
We received a memo from TSAC that had gone up to the Town Manager's Office, laying out the state requirements, and that we would certainly be in favor, it was supposed to be at 20, seemed almost kind of unfair to the residents that are looking for us to enforce at 20, and we haven't been able to do it for these years, to at least, you know, lower it to 25.
Okay, but the ordinance won't have to be changed, is that correct?
The ordinance, yes, the ordinance would have to be changed to reflect that stretch of roadway, and specifically where it breaks off, where you could go to the 1100 block of Shirley to the right. We don't, you know, suggest that be included, that Elliot doesn't be included along with TAFSAF.
I think, I think it has to be sent to Rules and Ordinance, where it's directed to do that.
I think that makes sense if I could either make an amendment or change my motion.
Withdrawal motion, and then start from scratch.
So I shall withdraw my motion and instead introduce a new motion to reduce the speed limit from Delby's Corner along the Deer Island Truck Route by declaring this area to be a thickly settled area or take any action thereto and send that to the Rules and Ordinance's Committee.
Okay, motion has been made. We're seconded. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. New business. I think about two years ago, we had a press conference down on Millerfield.
The old Millerfield.
The old Millerfield. And it was to introduce a concept for Massport to form a foundation, the Winthrop Foundation, whereby the town of Winthrop would receive over the course of two and a half years, or five years, excuse me, a half, a half million dollars a year, total of two and a half million dollars, that the foundation would use to do projects within the community, projects that are approved by the maker of the foundation. I will first read the motion, and then I'll kind of explain who is on this foundation. The motion, that the terms of the Winthrop Foundation Declaration of Trust in the form attached be and hereby accepted, and that the town of Winthrop be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend a foundation grant in the form attached hereto from the Massachusetts Port Authority in the amount not to exceed $2,500,000 for the purposes stated in the foundation's grant and the foundation's declaration of trust, and that the Town Manager, Collector, Treasurer, and any offices of the town of Winthrop in accordance Winthrop in accordance with and subject to the terms of said foundation grant and declaration of trust be and hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary and appropriate to effect this order. Do I hear the second?
Second.
Okay. The makeup of the foundation will be seven members of the community, two appointed by the Town Manager, one by the Town Council President, one by the Superintendent of Screwers, one from Senator Boncory's office, one from Speaker DeLeo's office, and one from Masport. And basically, they have to follow all of the guidelines if they come up with a project, whether it's a project to build something, they have to go through the grant process and the bidding process that you would normally do if the town is, is putting something out, any type of construction. So, with that, I'll open it up for discussion from the council members.
Council President, if I may?
Please.
I think that this is a step in the right direction, absolutely, but one thing that I'm concerned about is that this agreement doesn't do anything to address the noise issues, especially in Point Shirley and the other areas of Winthrop that are particularly impacted by the, by Logan Airport. And as was kind of pointed out at our marijuana forum, it's not all about money all the time. This is a quality of life issue that I know woke me up this morning before my six AM alarm clock, and the planes are taking off later and later and they are going over every forty-five seconds. It is literally maddening sometimes. So, while I'm really glad to see an extra financial component to this mitigation, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned and upset that it doesn't do more to address a more equitable distribution of noise and curfews potentially to, to planes taking off and landing.
I think the Senator pointed out that, you know, it's some, it's like a work in progress dealing with Massachusetts Port Authority and the FAA. And that's the big, the big McGiller of them is the FAA because you're trying to deal with Masport. FAA is the one that puts the flight patterns and what runway is open and what's closed. So, I think there's been this constant work that the CIC's been doing, the Noise Abatement Committee, that's been there. We're going to add some new members, folks that moved down to Point Shirley to get inward direct input. It's just a constant battle. I do know that our congressional delegation, I think it's Senator Lynch, has already proposed some type of monies for noise.
If I may?
Sure.
In the last congressional budgets, Congressman McLaughlin, Congressman McAvoy, I put in and got a lot of study to study noise mitigation, particularly the Masport windows as they've been constantly referred to, to take a look at that, see how, they have to study typically in any legislative body does a study before there's an allocation. So, this session, we're going to get that study and hopefully in the next session, there will be an allocation from the FAA to, you know, the noise through windows or whatever else is the best technology right now.
And an interesting note, I found out doing a little background work on this, the airport that's being run in San Francisco, they are actually toying with the idea of doing their own soundproofing program. If that comes to fruition, that's going to set a standard across the country as to what an airport maybe should have to do as far as mitigating the situations in the neighborhoods that they, that they impact. So, that's, that's something to look at. You know, this agreement, we're not giving up anything, okay? We're taking money from Masport in return for some of the work they're, they're doing on, on some of the expansion of the terminals. So, we still have them at bay in terms of anything that we need to do in terms of making the quality of life better in the town. Anyone else wish to be heard? Hearing none, I'll move for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
What we do is a roll call.
You want to do a roll call for this?
I think we should.
Okay, Council. Council Boncory says that we should do a roll call.
Councilman Eamon, Councilor Calhoun,
Yes.
Councilor Christopher,
Yes.
Councilor Terry,
Yes.
Councilor Soto, Councilor McDuffie,
Yes.
Councilor Finkley,
Yes.
Vice President Boncory,
Yes.
President Beckia.
Yes.
Thank you.
The pilot program, which the Senator referred to earlier, basically, we've, we've kind of been priding them along for the last two years. And thanks to the, the good work of, started with Terry Delahanny and also Dave Crossman and Austin, they've worked with Speaker DeLeo and Senator Boncory to try to bring them to the table. And we were successful in, in getting this done. And basically, what we've achieved from the nine hundred thousand dollars each year, which we would have gotten until 2025, the next year, basically, by the end of the seven years by fiscal 2025, we will be at the two million dollar mark per year, which is a great starting point to renegotiate a new package. So, I think this is something that has been long overdue. My sincere thanks again to the Senator and the Speaker and everybody involved in this. This, this will be a great thing for the town. I don't believe we really need a motion, but maybe an endorsement. This is something that the Town Manager has to sign. So, I will put it in the form of a motion that we endorse this revised mitigation agreement pilot program that takes us to fiscal 2025. A second. Discussion?
Yeah, I think we should just let people read the marks.
Yeah. So, right now, in 2019, instead of being nine hundred thousand, it would be a million two. In 2020, it would be a million three fifty. In 2021, it would be a million five. In 2022, one point six five million. In 2023, one point eight million. In 2024, one point nine million. In 2025, two million.
Council President?
Yes.
I think it's very nice of Masport. I, I would wonder, did they have any discussions at all about coming in 2025? They, I mean, I'm assuming they're going to be willing to extend it in some way, shape, or form. My other question is, I think we should potentially look at policies as to what to do instead of, again, just using it for the general fund, possibly look into some sort of capital plan or some sort of way to just use this money differently so we could address some of the issues I know Town Manager is looking at. You know, I don't think that, I think we should be careful as to how we use this money and there should be some sort of policy set.
So, I mean?
So, I agree with that. That is part of what I would like the Division of Local Services of DOR to look at when they come and help advise us concerning fiscal policies. That three hundred thousand dollars, hundred fifty thousand dollars is a nice start of a cap, of funding the capital plan. It's not to say that we would eat up every single increase with the capital plan, but if you had a good base of funding and a portion of the free cash each year instead of going into stabilization goes into a capital fund, that's how you're kind of adding up the few hundred thousand dollars that you would need to be able to invest in vehicles for DPW, vehicles for the police department, those types of things of a capital plan that, yeah, instead of doing it year to year, we'd be doing it over a five-year basis, maybe take on some debt to finance some of the things. But I agree with you, that would be a great funding source for longer-term CIP.
Anyone else wish to be heard? You want to take a roll call on this?
No, I think we just give our approval to the Town Manager.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Senator. Ladies, thank the Speaker and everybody else that's been involved in this endeavor. Public comment? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Michael Demento, Precinct Two. With the recent allocation of funds to upgrade the sewer drainage in Winthrop Center, has there been any thought of the downstream of Ingleside Park flood basin? Has that been into, taken into consideration with the upgrades upstream?
Yes, it has. The environmental bond bill was just happening at the state level earlier this year. Winthrop has allocated a portion of that money, but we need to have basically shovel-ready projects to present to them. We will be presenting as one of our projects, a water storage facility to take space at Ingleside Park. That work is with Woodward and Kern right now and most likely to get to like full engineering and design of it. It looks like it's going to, that work would be done by June.
So, with the manager, the town has upgraded those pipings, piping system down there in the sewer system, and I would hate to see the town spend money to then put a bigger pipe in when that was already done and it still has not alleviated the issue.
It's, it's not about a pipe, it's about a water storage facility. What's happening is basically when it's high tide and there's water, there's nowhere for that water to go.
Correct.
That storage facility would hold the water until the tide goes out and then it would be flushed out behind.
Do you have any plans on the size of that storage facility?
That's what the engineers are going to be working on.
Could I approach you and give you an engineering report from, I know it's old, January nineteen fifty-five, that previous litigation in regards to Ingleside Park has all gone right back to this engineering report that I've submitted previously to Woodward and Kern.
Sure. I mean, they should have it still, right? Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Just response to, Michael's comment, just a response to Michael's. I, I do, and I would ask Town Manager too, that all the work we're doing in the center is obviously needed and it's going to alleviate a lot of issues that we have down there, but it's also going to increase capacity going down towards the park. So, you know, when we're looking at a size, we don't only want the water that's currently there now, but it's potentially going to be that much more water coming in. So, that's, I think, a, a big issue in this, so make sure the capacity is somewhat large enough. I know it might, you know, whatever it happens.
It has to be large.
But that just has to be taken into account. Thank you.
Anyone else? Just a reminder that the curbside leaf pickup is scheduled for December fifteenth. Contact DPW for more information at eight oh six one three four one. The Winthrop Chamber of Commerce Holiday Labor at Winthrop Center is on Friday, the twenty-third, from three o'clock until six o'clock. And I wish everybody a wonderful Thanksgiving from the Town Council. I'll entertain a motion.
Council President?
Yes.
Two, two things. First of all, I just want to congratulate the Winthrop Drama Club on their Chicago performance. It was incredible. They do a fantastic job and I enjoyed it immensely, as I'm sure everybody else that went did. And just if the Town Manager could just explain, I know that we mentioned the leaf pickup, there was a little delay this week. If we could just explain the delay to the people?
Sure. So, you know, capital waste, something happened on their end concerning the leaf pickup. They were here, the trucks were ready for it, they were here the next day doing it, but there was a little bit of a blip in communication of it. We would ask people to hold off if they do have waste until December, but if we do see public outreach concerning an additional need for pickup, DPW is willing to be flexible concerning an additional pickup in the next week or two.
Okay. Council Boncory?
Just while talking about announcements, Senator Boncory is sponsoring a day after the Christmas tree lighting. He has rented out the rink for three hours of skating with Santa Claus and hot chocolate and so on, at the same time that the local vendors in town are going to be in the gymnasium with their wares. So, it's local shopping day and skating with Santa Claus and Senator Joe Boncory on Saturday afternoon. And I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
I also, I as well want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. But I just want to let everybody know that next Tuesday, I know there's been a lot of concern about the, the center developments going on in the center. I'm holding a forum, the Town Manager has graciously agreed to join me there to answer any questions that people in the community might have about, about the process or any developments that have happened. It's at the, sorry, yeah, it's at the Harvey Room next Tuesday at seven o'clock.
Anyone else? Hearing none? Message, motion for adjourned, right here, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. We will have a recess for nine minutes and then the next order of business will begin. In accordance with section nine dash twelve of the town home group charter, you are hereby notified that the Town Council President will hold a public forum on the delivery of the town services. A public forum is being held today, Tuesday, the little twenty, at the Leo Center. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll tell them in.
Thanks, Ron. So, nice to see everyone tonight. My name's Austin Faison. I'm still the new Town Manager for the time being. So, you know, personally, it's interesting for me to be on this side of these conversations. I've generally been in the crowd, in the crowd when I was younger, and as I've kind of moved up in my career, I've always been kind of off to the side somewhere. So, it's kind of fun to be the center of the action and call it the Austin Show and things like that. But, you know, tonight, I'm going to take the time to kind of do a little bit of the state of the town, how I see things, how I think we can kind of progress forward as a community, and what I'm trying to prioritize for the coming years. But really, to begin, this is, this is a fun week of the year. This is my favorite food-related holiday. I, I'm a big mashed potatoes and stuffing guy. The turkey, I'm okay with. But, you know, it's, it's a time that everyone can kind of get together with their families and reflect on the year, think about what they're thankful for. You know, I had a son earlier this year that I'm very thankful for and I have a daughter too, still thankful for her. But, you know, this, this holiday is a big holiday for my wife and I. We have a lot to be thankful for and we've had a lot of big life changes. So, I'm very happy to be here and share this time with you and I appreciate people coming out with the weather. Also, I wanted to thank Senator Boncory, already left, and a representative from Speaker DeLeo's office. But as I'll kind of highlight in this presentation, the intergovernmental relationships that we have in Winthrop are something that should basically be cherished because for the amount of, the per capita amount of things that you are getting from the state is almost unprecedented. So, you're lucky to have the representation that you have at the state level right now. You're lucky to have these relationships that have developed over time and I hope to continue these relationships in the future. Before I kind of get into running through almost my table of contents on this, a couple new people who are going to be joining the staff are here. One in the back is David Rodriguez. He's my new assistant Town Manager. Anyone who's looking at planning projects and things like that, you will most likely be talking with Dave. Dave comes here with a wealth of experience from a sheriff's office as well as the city of Everett. He is going to be an asset and I look forward to everyone having the chance to meet with him and get to know him because he's going to be around the community. Also, Anna Friedman, our new CFO. She's hired, she doesn't start until Monday though, so please act accordingly so she shows up on Monday. Anna comes to us from the state where she has done a great job of financial work over the years. She worked in A and F and the Senate President's Office. We are very lucky to have her and she is going to be hitting the ground fast and furious with the budget creation process and I'm trying to help put her in a position to make that as easy as possible. So, going into the focus of this presentation that I'm going to give tonight, I'm going to start with my management strategy, which kind of just walks through how I'm trying to operate things around here. Financial position of the town regarding revenue and where we kind of currently are in this fiscal year. The next budget that we're going to be looking at and we're going to be kind of starting to talk about publicly late February, early March, major projects. Winthrop 2030, metrics and transparency and departmental updates. You know, I hit on a couple of our new department heads. I have a wealth of department heads who are all sitting behind you, from inspectional services to police and fire, to health, to libraries, to council on aging. We're covering all of them, almost. If you have a specific question, I would like you to kind of hold it until the end. If it's something that any department head to come up for, we'll call them up. But the end of this is kind of set up more for the Q and A if people have questions about specific parts of the presentation. So, moving right along, so my management strategy. A fair amount of you here, I think, saw my interview process here and some of my presentations so far, but I am kind of singularly focused on continuing to make Winthrop a great place to live. focused on continuing to make Winthrop a great place to live, work, and raise a family. That government work is, that's what it's about. It's your money. I want to make this place a great place that you continue to like to live in, that you want to have your kids going to the schools, and if I can bring some businesses here, we can take some of their tax revenue and spend it accordingly as well. So, in the budget creation process, one of the things I'm gonna be doing in January is having the Town Council develop some goals and objectives. And those goals and objectives are going to drive what our departments are doing. So, every departmental goal and objective will filter up to a Town Council goal or objective. We want the boat kind of going all in one direction. We want all the oars going at the same time. So, a coordination of goals and objectives from the Town Council down to department heads and through myself is gonna be of the utmost importance of the budget creation process. And then going forward, I am going to work in my position to essentially be a conduit between Town Council and the department heads. You know, there's been things that have happened in Winthrop in the past, and we don't need to go into those, but it is important to me that in my role, my department heads are respected publicly, and they are supported. I have a good staff, and I want to keep it that way. And what I want to work to do is help inform the council concerning what my departments are doing, and if the council has specific requests from the department heads, they will kind of go through me. I want to kind of set myself up as the intermediary between the council and the functions of the government. So, kind of about me and how I am looking at this upcoming budget is that data and transparency is, again, going off of, we're spending your money, I want you to see how we're spending your money. The data itself, and being transparent to me is easy. We're already collecting data. We have it in-house. We just haven't done a great job of publicizing all of it, and we haven't done a great job of telling the story of how we're spending your money. And that's what I want everyone to feel like we are doing. I want our budget to be an easier-to-decipher document, and I look forward to kind of publicizing some of the documents and some of the websites that we'll have set up eventually, because I look for it to be as easy to understand as possible. I'm working to update the human resources policies. This is work that was done previously, and it wasn't enacted. I'm working to refresh some of those policies. I look forward to having a packet of proposed policies to the council in the next month, so we have a good, nice, clean book of HR-related policies. Stacy isn't here tonight, our HR director, but she's doing a good job. She had done good work on that previously, and they're just being updated, and she will coordinate with those as well. My budgeting standards are the GFOA, Distinguished Budget Award. It is kind of like an industry award about what a good budget looks like. I've won them for the last three years for previous budgets. I don't know if I'm gonna win that this year in Winthrop, but it's the goal. That's what I want to do. I want to have a budget that we can be proud of, that's held in the same regard as the other good budgets across the country. And I want, I don't want public meetings where numbers are being thrown about and we're kind of budgeting on the fly. I want a clean document that we can talk about, and we can really have real conversations about, and not hypotheticals and numbers that don't necessarily tie out. And then I'm also going to be, I'll bring this up a little bit later, but I'm going to have committees coming from my office on major strategies and initiatives and projects. So, I will be tasking committees to do specific work that I don't necessarily want the Town Council to give to some of the established committees. These are kind of project-specific committees that will have a, like a finite amount of time that they're working on a project, and then the committee will no longer be necessary after a period of time. So, in terms of those three committees, the three that, or the committees, the three that I'm personally looking at right now is a center business district one. And you notice up there, center business district has TRE. There's also TER that I have later in this. It's different in different documents. So, I'm looking for a public vote at some point to determine if it's TRE, which I think fits with French square, but that's a little TBD thing. The middle school site redevelopment, as well as an ethics committee. Like I said, with some of the things in the past, the ethics and the transparency of the government has been called into question. I don't want that to happen on my watch. So, I'm going to set up an ethics committee to oversee if we are going to enact something like a zero tolerance policy. You know, David has legal experience from his past, and he understands what it takes to run an ethics commission, so he can help provide some oversight over that as well. And then the intergovernmental relationships, I brought up what the speaker has done for us, and Senator Montgomery as well. But, you know, we're thankful for the work that they've done. Going forward, we are also going to have to continue to develop these relationships with Masport and WRA, the Metro Mayor's Coalition, and the MBTA. So, Masport, good news tonight. That's a lot more money that we're getting for them. In 2025, we're getting more than twice as much money per year. That is a big deal that we're getting that, and that is through the work of our intergovernmental relationships. Like, that was, we negotiated at the table for that, but the people hired than us in government did a very good job of negotiating on our behalf concerning some of the impacts that the pilot laid out. The MWRA, we are in discussions with about a multitude of topics. I went to the last public meeting concerning the pier, and I know a fair amount of the concerns. You know, it's not our land, so we don't have as much oversight over it, unfortunately, but we will continue to have a seat at the table and a representative on their board to advocate on behalf of Winthrop. The Metro Mayor's Coalition is important because that is where the housing metric that I will be using going forward, it's gonna be a 2030 housing metric. I'm signed on to the creation of 185,000 units of new housing over the next 11 years in the metro Boston area. There's gonna be upwards of 600,000 people moving to the area, and Winthrop is going to have to have some development come as part of it. It's not going to be 10 units or 20 units. This is gonna be hundreds of units, if not potentially thousands of units, of additional housing. This is also with the mindset that on Suffolk Downs, there will be, now that Amazon's not going there, it's gonna be 10,000 units of housing there. So, there is going to be a lot of development that is happening in this area. It has happened all over this region, and it's not going away anytime soon. And some of the projects that are coming towards the center business district are indicative of what's happening in the region. East Boston is essentially built up right now of a developable property, and that just gets pushed over here. Revere is quite developed as well, and some of their easy parcels to develop. Winthrop can only go on so much longer without some of this development hitting Winthrop. And then with the MBTA, you know, we're trying to talk to them about different things. One thing I would like to approach with them is some water-based transportation. Our ferry is working. It's financially viable right now, but it's financially viable because of the subsidies that we receive through the program. I would like us to move at some point to figuring out a more commuter-based strategy for a ferry, but in that case, we would need to scale, and I don't think it's on, Winthrop can necessarily scale a program like that. We can't invest in multiple boats at a time. So, it's figuring out, how do we utilize the public space that we have, and how can we integrate in with a water-based transportation network? So, I'm going to be pushing the MBTA on that. The Metro Mayor's is also involved with climate and MMA as well. To me, that is going to be like the large state program that comes out over the next few years. There are people at the state level as well in the Boston area that are talking about. The state is going to need to have a climate change response in terms of a government organization that's similar to MWRA, that's set up solely to focus on climate. This is an enormous problem. It's not going away. Winthrop, if things aren't done, Winthrop will be in trouble in, for many years, with the amount of water that's there. And I could spend our entire budget here on climate change mitigation, and it wouldn't be enough. This needs to be a statewide type of initiative of setting standards going forward of how we are combating rising sea levels. So, we have seawalls certain places, Quincy likes seawalls as well. Boston just announced that they're not doing seawalls anymore, and they're doing essentially natural-based seawalls. So, some, similar to Coflin Park, the idea behind that, that's the strategy that they're gonna use in East Boston and other parts of the harbor. So, there is no one way of doing this, but what we are all starting to realize is we all need to get on the same page and start spending money accordingly, because this, as evidenced by what happened earlier this year, and what's gonna keep happening here, is the water's not going away. It's gonna keep impacting us, and there's gonna be certain storms that we can't get out of the way of, and we're gonna have to plan accordingly. Moving forward. So, the financial state of the town right now. So, fiscal 17 to fiscal 18, there was 8% increase in assessed values by class. As you can see, in fiscal 15, you were at 1.8 billion in total value, and right now, you're at 2.28. That number is going to continue to rise. Your net growth is out, your projected net growth is lower than what we're currently seeing in terms of assessed values. This is good. This is new growth for us, and our new growth number continues to go up as the assessor Steve Roach continues to present numbers to me. Not money that we can necessarily use in the current fiscal year, obviously, but it's something for the future, and it's a way for us to budget accordingly, but also conservatively. So, again, the property values are going up. They have not come close to what the rest of the region is tracking at. And this is something that I keep telling people around town, developers will start knocking on doors, and they will start trying to piece parcels together, and they will continue to talk about more and more projects in this area. Your property values are lower than what they are in comparable communities in the region. You cannot develop on the water for any cheaper than you can in Winthrop, and it's going to become a reality that after a project or two, it becomes very financially viable for developers to come to this town. And when they start coming, and that's known, it happens very quickly. So, it's something that we are going to be working hard to be in front of, and then also getting money accordingly from developers in terms of potentially, not necessarily value capture, but looking to do things like TIFs, which have a lower tax rate on the delta of their tax. So, if you take a million-dollar building, change it to a $2 million building, we're not gonna tax you on $2 million. We're gonna tax you on the 1.5, but maybe you give us some of that tax back type of thing. So, it's things to be considered in the future, but TIFs and DIFs have never been explored by Winthrop before, and it's going to be something that we need to start looking at. In terms of revenues, we are overperforming on multiple lines right now. Currently, I'm a little over 650 as a projection for how much we're in the black on the year. I would like that to be closer to $1 million. If we go under $1 million in terms of our free cash for a series of years, our bond rating will get decreased, so I would like to keep it above $1 million for the foreseeable future. It was higher long ago. Some decisions were made to decrease that amount of money, but I would like to at least keep it at a floor of $1 million of free cash. And then just to kind of go over quickly what we're projected to be over in, in terms of revenues. Motor vehicle excise and tax liens are the major drivers, but we're running above in meals and hotels, penalties, pilots, our fees, our rentals, our licenses, our investments. We're doing, we're doing pretty well, but, you know, it's, again, it's not a ton of money, and it's things that flow to free cash in the long run. From there, this is the sobering stat kind of visualization that we need to kind of address as a community. If you look at that, the light blue number on the top is expenditures, assuming 3%, 3.5% growth across expenditure lines, which is generally what you're tied to between union contracts, 2% COLAs. Your budget is 84% people, so it's mostly tied up in people in their increases. Your revenues are growing 2.5% in property tax because of Prop 2.5. You have about a 1.5% increase that you could see in motor vehicle excise and meals and rooms and stuff like that, but those numbers are never gonna meet the way that it's set up right now. So, you know, you see the number getting further and further apart. Those lines are going to continue getting further apart until we have some sobering conversations concerning either the delivery of services or the amount of revenue that we're taking in. So, delivery of services, as I said, it's 84% people. That means it's 16% in kind of services and supplies and stuff like that, so we can't really cut that stuff. If you want to cut from the budget, you're looking at cutting people. And that's the real reality that we're looking at from my side with this budget creation. I've talked about this publicly, and I might as well talk about this now. I think this community is going to have to be considering an override in the near future. I think with a fair amount of work, you would be looking at it for 2020 type of thing. Again, this is not something that would come from my office. This would be the community working on as an override study committee. It would be a ballot question, things like that. I can only help inform the process, but as I said, those lines aren't gonna get any closer unless there is a fair amount of development that happens, that still takes years to kind of come online and get the tax revenue from, and really no amount of building permits are gonna make up $5 million type of thing. So, it's a hard slide to look at. It's the reality of the situation. It needs to be known going into the budget process that this is how we're looking going forward, and we're gonna have to have difficult conversations. So, that then filters into the budget. So, this right here is an example. It did not come out well on this up here, but OpenGov is a company that I will be utilizing for our, the creation of our budget document. And what they can do for us is that we can push all of our budget information from the last approved budget into their system. We can play with it in almost dashboard format, and it makes it very easy to account for any of the changes that we make in the budget. What this will help us with is, essentially, my job in Brookline was to do what this software can do. So, for a quarter of the money of what I was getting paid in Brookline, we have a piece of software that can do the same work. So, it's a good piece of software. It will be helpful, and it cuts down some of the lag work that we have to do internally. We'll also be able to have a dynamic website through this project, or product, and it gives us the opportunity to visualize the impacts of budget proposals and decisions. So, if there's something that's unfunded, but we want to tell the story about it, and talk about why it's important for longer term and override, but in real terms, this is why Department X can't have Y. We can tell the story around that. And I want everything that happens with this to almost be an ongoing conversation about the budget. I'm gonna present a balanced budget at the end of February, and the schools are gonna present a balanced budget as well. After that, through the finance committee and through the council, conversations will be had. If someone wants to add a clerk somewhere, you gotta cut the money from somewhere else. So, it's going to be a transparent process, and as any changes are made, we can easily update them so it's publicly available. What this can also do for us is we can have an open checkbook option, so we can build a site that tells you how all the money's being spent, but you can go in there and say, "My tax bill is $5,000. Where does my tax money go?" And it breaks out by department, how much money you're giving to each department. So, when someone calls Commissioner Cowell's office and says, "I pay your salary," he could respond with, "No, you actually paid $2 of my salary for the year, but thank you. What's your concern? How can I help you?" So, I want people to really know that it's not on, like, no one's paying one job or another with their tax bills. Your money's being spread out across the entire organization. In addition, telling these stories is how I think we need to talk about this financial plan. The numbers are the numbers, and the money is the money, but talking about what, how we prioritize, how we're spending the money, is the story of our budget. We need to tell how we are going to move Winthrop into the future. So, through the budget, it's a forward-facing document. We are talking about what our priorities are for the next fiscal year, and this is a tool to kind of help us get to that point. Going from there, the process that I was talking about, it's aggressive, don't get me wrong. I feel bad for Anna, because I'm gonna be working with her a lot concerning this, but next month, I'm gonna be sending out requests to department heads to submit their requests to us. Like I said, most of those requests are gonna be a no. We don't have the money to pay for things, and I've informed department heads that people, we don't have money for people. We may have money for some supplies or some services or some of these technologically-based, database applications, but we're not gonna have money for people, and that's just the financial reality of our situation. Going from there, in January, the Town Council will develop goals and objectives. The budget document will be worked on internally, and work will be done between the town and the schools to provide balanced documents. We will also most likely be presenting very similar-style documents, so they're gonna, they're gonna use OpenGov as well, so we can have some continuity in how all of the materials that are given out look. And the websites will have some of the same look as well. Again, like I said before, the goals and objectives of the council are what drive the entire document. I give like an introductory part of it and give my message. I give like an introductory part of it and give my message about the creation of the document, but the goals and objectives of the council are, again, what the goals and objectives of, they're supposed to be representing the community. So their goals and objectives should be community-focused, goals and objectives that then tie down to the departmental level. In February, at the end of February, there's going to be a presentation of the budget to the finance committee and the town council. I don't want the presentations to just happen at the finance committee level. I want the town council involved with budget presentations as well. I will give every department head the opportunity to talk publicly about their budget, what they're looking to do with the money that I have proposed for them to get, and if they see fit, they can advocate for things that they think they need in addition. Although sometimes those pleas may fall on deaf ears, I want to give everyone the opportunity to advocate for what they're looking to do. And then in March, April, and May, there's going to be the public hearings. And, you know, I would like to have a nice clean budget at some point in June to submit up to the higher levels of government and get moving into fiscal twenty. So then from there, again, I'm going to have some, that's one of the pictures that was submitted for the cover of the annual report, and I liked it. And it's not necessarily going to be on the cover of my budget, but I thought it looked for a nice, it made a nice-looking book. But this balanced budget document is going to be coming out by the end of February. That's my hard deadline to get something out balanced that we can start talking about. Metrics are going to be incorporated into it. Like I said before, a fair amount of the departments are already capturing data. What my job is to do, and the assistant town manager and CFO as well, is help publicize some of this information. I want people telling the good stories of what their departments are doing and kind of start setting expectations with the public as well. The goals, objectives, and metrics will be the guiding measures of potential outcomes. It's not necessarily how many potholes get fixed. It's the time that it takes us to fix them. Or it is, what's the overall condition of our roads? So it's, it's expanding a little bit more from, oh, we fix a hundred potholes compared to two hundred. That speaks nothing to what Steve's doing in his department because we could have had a bad winter and a good winter. Like, those things are out of his control. What really matter are, what's the, what does our pavement look like? What, what's our streetscape look like and those types of things? And then again, the end goal is getting the GFOA distinguished budget award, and we can get templates to seek that out, but I really want Winthrop to kind of be on level footing with some of our peer communities around here that get that budget award every year. Going from there, major projects, Center Business District, there was a vote last week to fund this project or pursue financing of this project. There's going to be a managers committee on this. There are still some steps to take before anything is done with this project. We're going to have an additional peer review. We are also going to try as hard as possible to come up with a good construction phasing plan, and we're going to make sure that the work of the landscape architect is also incorporated into the plans. Just another oversight of that, Woodard and Curran has stated that they have incorporated those previously, but we will give them another opportunity to check on that. Next one up, former middle school site development. Something has to happen there. It's been vacant for long enough. You know, this is a large parcel of land that the community has a stake in because it was once a middle school. There are, the layout of the property is kind of unique in that the optimal placement of an ice rink would actually be where the middle school is, and the optimal place of a large building would be where the ice rink is. At the end of this process, I will say this to everyone. I want an ice rink, and I want time devoted, if that ice rink is not operated by the town, I want time devoted to Winthrop. Winthrop should come first if there's another operator of the ice rink. And I want a gym for Parks and Rec, and I would like some type of offices for Parks and Rec. Beyond that, I am agnostic to what comes to town. I am open to talking to any developer with any good ideas that wants to take on a project of this side because, of this size, because it is the largest parcel that will be developed in town, and it is something where we have the opportunity to have something pretty interesting there. And it was brought up in the Center Business District master plan that was done previously, but the idea of having a nice sightline from French Square all the way to Ingleside Park would be a great way to kind of tie the park into the Center Business District and really have some continuity in this somewhat government area, somewhat main like action place of the town. So that is upcoming. I will definitely have a managers committee working on that as well, and I would like to be working on that sooner than later. In terms of the environmental bond bill money, I brought that up earlier, but Ingleside Park is the place where a large water storage facility makes the most sense. Woodard and Curran is going to spec out engineering on this and give us an idea of proposed costs and work that would have to be done there. It's going to be a large water storage tank that essentially goes a pretty shallow depth, holds all the water when there's a big storm and it's high tide. When the tide goes out, the water gets flushed out as well. This, along with work on the middle school site and the Center Business District, should alleviate a fair, if not all, of the flooding in that area. With climate change happening, I can't say for certain, but I would like to think, and we're trying to work with the peer view as much as possible, concerning mitigating for increased seawater heights and things like that. But between those three projects, we should alleviate a fair amount of the water. Now, when you line up those projects, it's at least two years, it's going to be two years' worth of work in the Center Business District. The middle school site, there's going to be a demo that happens with it, at least to a portion of it, and then the building and shifting of things around, so that is going to easily be a two-construction project as well. Ingleside Park, once we get the parameters around it, that could be a once-construction season project, but it's a pretty large-scale work. So you're looking at four to five-ish years' worth of work in that area. And with the development that's going to happen there, I can't say for certain what order the development is going to happen in the Center Business District, but there's going to be additional work there when some of those buildings are converted from one-story buildings into kind of mixed-use developments, whatever kind of shakes out with that. So, kind of going back on these major projects, though, so I'm highlighting these as my major projects that I would like to work on in the future. These are not mine, though. These are the ones that your community has already chosen. These were part of the master plan of the Center Business District. All of these aerial shots were from your report from last year. This is a public report that was put out in March of two thousand seventeen. A fair amount of this planning has already been done. The action hasn't been done in it. No steps have been taken after extensive work has been done on these plans. And it makes me in a fortuitous position because I get to kind of kick the tire on something and get the machine moving in the right direction again. But you all have done the community legwork on a fair amount of these projects over the last ten years. You have more reports and plans from the MAPC than I've ever seen in any other community, and what you really need to do is start acting on the planning that has already been done. And that's what I'm trying to put everyone in the position here to kind of realize together that we can get money for some of these projects, and we can also just get moving on them instead of talking about them. And then also, what I wanted to highlight was, last year on Friday, July twenty-eighth, there was a big meeting that happened in the French Square. And what that was is the former town manager McKenna was accepting money from Massworks. And the governor was here, Secretary Ash was here, and the Speaker of the House was here. And that was the original public event for the Massworks money for the Center Business District infrastructure project. So not only did you not spend that in fiscal eighteen, you're not going to spend it in fiscal nineteen, and we're going to get it spent in fiscal twenty, but realize like this is money that was long ago allocated for something that was supposed to be a shovel-ready project. You all have been talking about the Center Business District for years and years. It's time to kind of get the work going and start fixing it. So those are the major projects, and it doesn't stop there. There's economic development from the state is going to be coming to town in January with some life science developers who want to potentially bring some businesses here. The cost of lab space and office space in Cambridge and areas of Boston, and even Revere and Somerville are getting too high for kind of smaller, more nimble companies. So Winthrop is becoming an option, and they're looking for, I mean, I get emails from them basically saying, "I need space anywhere. Like, I just need a space to set up for twenty people." So we are going to be talking to them and looking at some of the properties around town that have vacant signs up and are boarded up, and we're going to try to put some of these businesses in the position to operate within Winthrop. I want, I drive into Winthrop every day from Holliston, and the whole time I see cars going out of Winthrop. And what I want to do is facilitate some cars coming in. I want cars coming in here so that people are spending their money here when they go to lunch. They're getting their hair done here. They're getting their nails done here type of thing. And then also, after work, I would like a population to go into the Center Business District, to live there in apartments, and then have to buy a sandwich on the way home or go to La Siesta and pick up food on the way home, or Blackstrap or something like that. I want to capture some more money, and unless we're building places for businesses to go or places for people, more people to live, we're never going to have that. And again, I've said this previously, these types of things, these costs that come up, these unexpected expenditures, all fall on you. They fall on your tax bills, your water bills. And what I'm trying to do is help get Winthrop in the position that you're spreading out those costs to more people. And that kind of has to be the focus longer term. So one of the plans I'd like to put together, and again, most of this work has already been done. We are not replicating the work of the past, but we are consolidating the work of the past into one easier-to-decipher report. Winthrop twenty thirty is what I'm just going to keep calling it now. MAPC has done years of plans here, and it's going to be the public planning document that I want to kind of drive the efforts of the town going forward. Some of the key goals that were hit on, there will be a jobs number. I don't know what that jobs number will be, but we'll work on a jobs number. We can say five hundred. It's eleven years from now, so a lot of things can change, but we're going to get a number, and we're going to work towards that. And that's what, part of what's going to drive our budget as well. There's going to be a housing unit metric. That's easy for me because I signed on to something with the Metro Mayor's Coalition, and I'm going to push that number into this. I don't know what the number's going to be, but there's going to be a number there. We're going to talk about an establishment of publicly accessible open space, and if there's not new public space created, we're going to figure out how to better delineate the public space that we have to accommodate some of the requests of the community concerning public spaces for different types of courts and things like that, dog park, all of those types of things that the community is requesting. We're going to figure out how to best divvy up the open space that we already have and explore how to reutilize some of the stuff that we have as well. And then in addition, there will be goals related to transportation, development, and preserving neighborhood character that will be part of that. I'm looking for potentially ten to twenty metrics that we're looking at community-wide that that's what we're trying to work on for the next eleven years. It's a guiding document that each year we're trying to tick off a little bit of a few numbers to, in the long run, like encompass a large amount of change. There will be yearly progress reports, and this will be a dynamic document that will be changing over time. Somerville has one called Summer Vision. Boston has one as well. Boston actually just increased their housing unit number because they already had planned out all of the housing that they had accounted for in their public documents. So these are things that they change over time, and we'll change these metrics, but it's exciting to look at where we can potentially be in the future because I've said this, but French Square looks a certain way. It's looked, I have pictures from the eighties when it was redone. It looks the same. Some of the same stores are there. And what's sad to me is that there aren't people in those stores. And that's what I want to try to figure out how to do. I don't want to get rid of any of the businesses there. What I want to do is start facilitating how we get people into those businesses. So whether we're building above them and they're leasing from those people who are the new developers, or we kind of shift some people around, whatever have you, I want to protect some of the businesses there, but I also want to give the opportunity to those businesses to succeed. Right now, they have a limited customer base, and we are not doing ourselves any favors the way that we are currently trying to attract people to town. Going from there, in terms of metrics and transparency, some of the ways that this will factor in is budgeting, planning, and my organization chart. The simplest way for me to describe this is I don't like talking about people's gut instincts. Your gut doesn't matter to me. What I want is data that backs up your intuition. If Steve tells me that it costs a hundred fifty thousand dollars to clear the streets with three inches of snow on them, but it costs two hundred thousand dollars to clear the streets with five inches on them, I want to explore how best to talk about what is our per-inch snow removal per street. Like, talking through some of the work that's already been done and the time commitments that we have to certain things will help us communicate what we're spending our money on. But then we can also go through a public expectation process. And what I think of with that is in terms of service-level agreements. So there are certain places that DPW cannot get to in terms of cutting grass. They cut grass certain places four times a year. It's the financial reality of the situation. That's how much money can be dedicated to that. If people would like that to be increased, we need to talk about how much money it would take to increase that. That is the simple reality of, we need to set expectations. Instead of people saying, "I see this. I look at it every day. It looks terrible, and Steve's cutting it the next day." What I want to do is, here are the four dates that they will be cut per year. If it's not within that date, that's, look for the next date, and then it's going to be cut. And if you would like an increase of services, please contact your counselor to talk about the budgeting of the DPW department. It's not all on the department heads to speak to the limitations of their budgets, but what I want to do is talk through the realities of the situation that we may not be able to fix a pothole in forty-eight hours, but maybe we can commit to fixing a pothole in seventy-two hours. Setting real expectations with the community, so when the community wants to reflect on what the town is doing, we are in turn talking about what our service-level agreements are with the community, and we can be held to that standard. When we come to an agreement about what our service levels should look like, then we can kind of move forward and operate from there. Lastly, with the metrics and transparency, I am completely in favor of using technology to help modernize the departments that I have in-house. There's a fair amount of things in Excel documents on people's individual computers. Things are still kept on paper. We have sign-offs that are physical sign-offs instead of being digital sign-offs. There's a fair amount of modernization that hasn't been invested in previously in Winthrop because there hasn't been kind of a call for it, and I would like to change that. OpenGov is one example of that. That's my budgeting stuff. We need a more robust online permitting system for our inspectional services and building department so that people can apply for permits online, but we can also standardize the sign-off process. So we're crossing our i's and dotting our, completely wrong, crossing our t's and dotting our i's. But also, we can give the public an understanding of where their permit falls in the process. We can also do this thing, this type of thing for liquor licenses and all different types of licenses we can build into this. There's a piece of software I would like to pursue. Our payroll, we have some deficiencies in our internal payroll system that we are looking to alleviate. It deals with how we track time, how we measure up against FLSA or OSHA standards and things like that. So updating our payroll system is something that our new CFO will be working on, as well as Stacy in HR, to get it in a little bit better place. There is a work order system that DPW uses. I will go through the exploration process with Steve concerning potentially upgrading that system or pursuing a different work order management system. This would be kind of in tandem with a conservation services application. So something like C Click Fix or something like that where people can say, "I have a pothole in front of my house. Here's the picture of it," and a work order gets pushed over to Steve. DPW can in turn close the work order out if the work is done. They can keep track of the work orders that they're providing internally, that they're kind of self-generating, but to add a level of transparency to the work that's already been done, because I feel like there is a lot of good work that is done in town, and previous town managers haven't taken the time to exemplify the good work that's being done, and I want to try to do that as much as possible. And then the data in terms of the website and incorporation of the budget, I can keep harkening back to it, but it is of the utmost importance to me because it tells the story of the future priorities of the town. And the metrics will help tell that story. What do we want to spend money on, and how do we prioritize services? Those are the questions we should be talking, asking ourselves when we talk about this budget. It's not, "I know this department, and I care about this department head, and I want to give them what they want." It's, "What services are we prioritizing in the next year? And what do we actually want to spend our money on?" We're going to have limited resources of new growth. Let's have a realistic conversation about where we're spending that limited growth. So with that, that is most of my presentation. We have departmental updates. Did you want to give yours, Row, or did you want me to give yours? Why don't you come up and give yours? Thank you, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Roseanne Triompha Mazukely. I'm the Veteran Services Director for the town. And I've been on board in Winthrop for five and a half years. So I've done a much, much, much outreach, serving veterans. We have approximately twenty-two hundred veterans in Winthrop, and that includes family members as well as those currently serving. We have a number of veterans who are on active duty right now. This past year, two thousand seventeen, the data had come out. Two hundred and forty-nine Veterans or Surviving Spouses in Winthrop are receiving three hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and nine dollars through my VA. are receiving $308,409 through my VA claim process. So, that doesn't cost the town anything but my time, okay? There are 20 surviving spouses receiving a total of 26,613. That's, the veteran dies of a certain disease, and the spouse is authorized that benefit. Five veteran families are paid almost $2,500 of funeral costs. And this doesn't include the amount of veterans, when they come and see me and they want assistance, I immediately send them to the VA for free healthcare, or next-to-nothing-cost healthcare. I help them with their GI bill payments, and applying for GI bills, and their veteran bonuses. Massachusetts is a unique state, where we lead the country in VA benefits. And veterans who serve, come back, they get bonuses for their time, their deployments. Also, any veteran in Winthrop and their surviving spouses who are receiving 100% VA disability are eligible for a $2,000 a year annuity through the state. So, my work has been, we had a lot of people, we have a program called Chapter 115, and that is mandated throughout the state, and that is a benefit for low-income veterans or their surviving spouses. So, we've been up and down, up and down. When I first took over, there were only four people. I went as high as 26 people, which is very low compared to my communities, my comparison communities, and now I'm back down to about eight or nine. So, they're, most of my clients are disabled, or surviving spouses. And that's a stipend. Winthrop gets 75% reimbursement of those costs. So, we are forever doing outreach, and forever trying to assist veterans and families. Any questions of me? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Row. Al, did you want to hit on your numbers?
I'm pretty good.
Okay. So, just from ISD, I spoke briefly about the good work that our assessor is doing in terms of capturing the new growth, and giving me relatively frequent updates concerning the amount of new growth that we're looking at. And I'm always happy to talk to Steve, because he's always going to increase that number every time I talk to him. But we are doing tremendous work in our inspectional services and building department as well, ahead of the curve on essentially every metric that we would want to tie them to. More permits than ever, more value than ever going through their office, more citations than ever, some revenue that we're not going to be able to capture in this calendar year, but will hit in the next calendar year. But inspectional services and building department, once we get some of the metrics out there, we can show year-over-year growth and the steady increase. It somewhat begins to justify potential increased spending in that department, in terms of, at least, obviously, offering the online permitting, and giving them an easier way to handle the amount of work that's going through their department, because it's good. There's a lot of work being done across town, and there's going to continue to be a lot of work done across town, and it's going to continue to stress Al's office. So, thank you very much, Al. With that, that's my departmental updates of the ones that were presented to me, unless the department heads in the back have anything they want to chime in with. We can kind of open this up to Q and A, if anyone has questions. I know I've talked a lot, so maybe you're tired of the sound of my voice, and you want to go home. So, whatever you would like to do, I'm open to that. But thank you very much to everyone who came out, and if we want to do Q and A, we can do that for now. You have a question? You're allowed to ask me a question if you would like to. All right, seeing none. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Please come up to the microphone as well.
Hi, everyone. Jean Cofflin, Precinct 5. I just have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
Thank you for all the information that you passed on tonight, and to meet you tonight. But one of my concerns, I guess, would be, I know you talked about the Center Business District having a committee appointed, so I just have a quick question on, who would be on that committee? Is it going to be residents, laypeople in the community, or are you going to appoint certain officials?
There's going to be a combination of residents, and I've asked Counselor Peter Christopher to serve on that as well.
Okay, that's great. So that would be good, because Peter is at Precinct 5, and because, you know, he's recused himself from a vote.
Oh, I'm well aware.
You know, we need representation, okay? And so I feel like we voted people in, and three people have recused themselves, and it, it makes life difficult for us, okay? Because we feel like we don't have a voice.
Sure.
So I try to show up at these meetings, and we try to keep concerned, many of us here tonight are people that live next to these buildings that are going to be developed. What we've been asking for over and over and over, I have a folder here, full of a year and a half worth of meetings, research, answers. We want to be included, we want to be informed, we need to be communicated with. I'm tired of hearing, "Oh, they're starting, oh, there's a four or a five-story building going up, oh, they're starting next month." We don't hear anything. I do check the papers, I do go to planning board meetings, I ask, "Has anything been You know, they tell me, "No, there hasn't been nothing." So then I hear, you know, "Hey, things are going up." Well, it needs to go through a proper manner, and we need to, you know, make sure of that. We've begged, we've asked the last town manager, Terry, and Peter. We had an informational meeting back one, January 24th, okay, 2018, and I have it here, February 1st, in the paper, the Winthrop transcript, okay? Published, it was, "The council will be presented with the town zoning recap." And we got our answer from KP Law, it was 35 feet, two and a half stories, next door resident. And we are residents, and I hate when I hear, "There's going to be four or five-story buildings." I know we need to talk, I know they want to probably make compromises, and they're shooting for double of what the lawyers are telling us that they can go. And I know, you know, that's great, because you can ask for the moon, you know, and I'll give you something less, but it's, it's got to be talked out, and we live there. And I've lived there for 32 years, and the Family Dollar site that they're really talking about developing first, apparently, concerns me. You know, I see it, I know it's unsafe, I live there, I can...
So there was a site plan review meeting for that, already.
Okay. When was that?
About a month ago.
Okay.
It was publicly noticed and things like that.
Okay.
There's plans published.
There's plans put in already?
They put out plans, yeah, because there was a site plan review.
Building phase, things like that, everything?
Yeah.
In fact, okay. And I can see those at the town hall?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so I will do that. But it would be nice to be informed, okay?
Yeah.
It, it just really would be nice to be informed.
So, I believe that meeting was publicly noticed. But going forward, one of the things with my manager's committee concerning Center Business District, David will be there, he will have a presence there on a weekly basis, concerning the infrastructure project, but then also development that's going to impact that community. Because in reality, you can't have everything get developed at once, because there's nowhere to put the trucks.
Right.
To even do the Family Dollar site, they're looking at modular, like, put-together pieces of buildings, that's how they build now. They need places to stage those trucks, and things like that. And that's something that will be an impact to our community. You know, it's figuring out how to make it so they don't have 50 trucks driving through town over a course of hours.
Or parked, you know, on a lot.
So, exactly, so those, those things will be worked on.
And we need to know that we can get a fire truck safely down the street, because right now, it couldn't make the turn.
But that, that doesn't have to do with the development itself. That has to do with the planning of the roads in the Center Business District.
But it's unsafe. And so just one more thing I want to...
Well, that's incorporated into the Center Business District plans, and those maps are public as well.
So just make sure things are done in the proper way. There were rodents in the building, we don't want them out in the neighborhood, spreading, coming into people's houses. We reported this summer to the Board of Health numerous times, the size of them, running through yards in daylight. So, you know, it, it needs to be a process, we need to be respected and, and protected a little bit in this. I know it will happen, it needs to happen, we all know that. But we also need to be informed, included, and thought of in this process, because we have to live through it.
Absolutely.
The other thing I'm concerned about is, when I look out, I can see that the roof looks like it's collapsing. So I worry about a fire, heavy snow, you know, how our first responders are going to be impacted too.
Which property are you talking about?
Excuse me?
Which property has a sinking roof?
The Family Dollar.
Okay.
I can look out my bedroom window, and I think wood is holding tarps on a little part of the building. So, you know, anyone's welcome to come on by and see. But that's what I look out on, and I mean, it's an eyesore.
Yeah.
There are many ways into it, and if kids ever want to get in there, and, you know, God forbid, and there's environmental things. I mean, it's been empty for over 12 years, and I remember at least six years ago, there was an oil spill in there, before the building was gutted.
Yeah, that was, a developer would take care of all of that stuff. But Al, did you want to speak about the...
Basically, that's one of the reasons why the building needs to be developed. As, you know, the Department of Inspection Services, beautiful work with the landlord of the town, that, or the natural unit, that, or the hall involved last year, they had brought up the limits of that building. I mean, the building has, you know, continued to be some problematic down there. How we address the urban vegetation, including, we're working extremely hard on keeping the rat population down, and the restaurant, and constantly, towns, they have to pay out of their pockets, to be sure the top of the restaurant, and also, they did fight the problem. But the building doesn't need to be taken down, it wasn't structured now, since it's been a year and a half ago, on the building's end, it's, you know, somewhat safe structure to be standing. But that doesn't mean it's safe, just because the engineers are surprised with the standing structure, that doesn't mean that somebody broke into the building, fell through a floor, all kinds of things happening. But that's one of the reasons why it got confidential, and must have worked extremely hard on having involved the builders. So that building can be taken down, and something can be put in place.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your concerns.
Hi, Austin, Don Corte, Precinct 3.
Hi.
I love your presentation, and I like what I'm seeing. I'm from Somerville, so just a comment, that Summer Vision looks really great on paper, but it happened really quickly, and it, it did involve a lot of people, but it didn't involve the natives, the people who grew up in Somerville. So I'm here in Winthrop, and I'm seeing these pressures. I lived through the gentrification of Somerville for 40 years, you know, but I'm 43, so, you know, at some point in time, I became aware of the gentrification, and it has gotten to a point where it's really untenable for the people who grew up there. And so I see these people in Winthrop that are amazing people, and they're natives here, and I want to make sure that they're included, and people here, like, want to be involved. And I agree that, I read the newspaper, and I don't see some of these things, I have a subscription, it comes to my house every Thursday. So I really try to stay informed, and it's hard. So if there's a meeting and nobody shows up, it means that the meeting wasn't advertised properly, because people in Winthrop will show up, and they want to be a part of it. The people here are amazing. So let's just a comment, overall, I like this, and I, but I, I stood up to talk about the slide where you spoke that you're about MWRA, and you're going to be working with MWRA. And I appreciate what you're saying, and you have this great style, and I think that you'll approach these intergovernmental relationships with respect, as you have expressed. But it's a tricky balance, from my perspective, living here almost five years, that we are in the middle of these two huge agencies, and they both want stuff from us, right? And so, and it seems especially with MWRA, that we are being taken for granted lately. And if you're negotiating with them, we would like to invite you to come down to Point Shirley and meet with us. We can meet at the Point Shirley Association Hall, and you can hear from the people who live most closely to the Deer Island, and you can hear the, the many complex issues that we are facing with having the island attached to our neighborhood. I think we're about like, you know, 3,000 people in Precinct 3, and a lot of them have had decades, like, well before I lived here, of background and history with them. So there are a lot of people with really negative feelings. I am new in town, so, but I can see from my vantage point, a lot of things that aren't right, about what's going on down there, especially with the new plans to have a 24/7 park open. There's not one park in the whole state open for 24 hours a day, you know, so...
So also not a, so just to kind of go back and forth on the MWRA thing, they manage that property and that outdoor space, I would say that there's not any outdoor space that's maintained, as well as they maintain that. There's no DCR space that's maintained to the same level of MWRA. So it's, it's a, we're in a tricky spot, that they do a pretty good job with that park, and figuring out what to do longer term is not always the easiest thing for, I think, Winthrop to try to work on with them.
Okay, I don't want to debate that right now, because I just wanted to make a quick comment. But it sounds to me like you've talked to them and not us, if you think it's maintained well. I mean, I went to the Boston Harbor Island Association, and I met the VP over there to say to him, "Hey, why, why is this a national park, but there's no national park people here? Why is this a Boston Harbor Island, but they don't have any of the same standards of all the other Boston Harbor Islands?" And he's like, "Oh, well, you know, everyone's assuming that he's doing a great job over there." I mean, he, he has his property, Boston land, it's a national park, under the National Park umbrella, it's a beautiful piece of property, and he has 100% autonomous decision-making on that property.
Well, MWRA is like a quasi-government agency, so it's, it's, they fall into a weird area where we don't have oversight over them. Like, we're, they're inviting us to the table to work with them, and, I mean, we're, I think everyone's trying to get a net positive, like, MWRA is trying to get some benefits from Winthrop, Winthrop's trying to get some benefits from MWRA. I mean, like, it's, it's just one of those things that...
Will you, will you please come to Point Shirley Association, meet with us? We, we had talked about already, like, "Oh, we have a new town manager, we should invite him down to the point and come meet us," because you have your hands full with so many issues, and then, and understandably, we're out of sight, out of mind, but then things bubble up down there, and it's like, "Well, what's going on at the point with these issues?"
You are absolutely not out of sight, out of mind. Ask Counselor Nick how many times we've talked about things that directly impact Point Shirley. You are not out of sight, out of mind.
Okay, we're going to be upset if you don't meet with us before you renegotiate things with MWRA, so...
I haven't met with many community organizations, so please don't hold that against me.
No, that's okay.
But I will do my best. I was invited to your meeting in September, and I was actually out of town for it, but you all are a priority. Don't think that you fall by the wayside. I see your signs, I've been out there multiple times. I know what you guys are facing, I've looked at, I've talked to Nick about using some of that environmental bond bill of money concerning seawalls. I can't do anything about Cofflin Park, the Arm Corps of Engineers and CZM have already weighed in on that. So, don't for a second think that there's a part of this town that I am leaving by the wayside, or a relationship I'm not trying to wring as much dry, and as much out of positive for Winthrop as possible. It's not something that I'm talking to MWRA, and I'm like, wink, wink, nudge, nudge, we're on the same table type of thing. I'm trying to figure out a feasible way forward, because I've watched the meetings that have happened publicly, I watched the meeting that happened this summer.
Oh, good.
I was at the meeting over the fall.
Yeah.
You know, not necessarily the most productive meetings, from either side, I don't think. But we need to kind of try to work towards compromises and amenable situations that I don't, personally, I don't think MWRA is going to present anything that that part of town is happy with. Just, just my read on the situation. I've seen the previous issues that have come up, I've worked through kind of some of the years of presentations that have been made. You know, it's a, it's a tough spot. I, I, it, it's a hard area, I know there's a fair amount of new people moving there, and there's some people who have lived there for a long time. It's hard, you're in between an airport and a waste storage, like a sewer facility. Those are not new, they have been there for a long time, and the impacts of them were somewhat known earlier, and they're continuing to be explored in the future. But again, just kind of like, MWRA, we're doing our best with, Massport, we're doing our best with, in terms of soundproofing and things like that. Soundproofing is something that the FAA has to kind of weigh in on, and stuff like that, like, it's, there's, we're, I'm...
So I'm on the Airport Hazards Committee, so we, we, we would love to talk to you about that, that, that's not why I stood up, I mean, that's, that's something we talk about forever.
I'm trying to talk about the nature of intergovernmental relationships, and how, I'm, I'm trying my best. And I don't think that anyone in Winthrop has not had the interests of any one part of Winthrop when we've had these conversations. No one has been falling asleep at the wheel and not advocating on Winthrop's behalf.
Okay, but the one thing you should know about the meeting in the summer, that people say that it wasn't productive, but I'm very proud of my neighborhood, that, that room was full, because people in my neighborhood knocked on doors, got people out there. No, I've never seen a town meeting in the five years I lived here, I've never seen a Massport meeting, I've never seen a MWR meeting, who got that many people out. But that room was full, because our neighborhood banded together and said, "We care about these issues, and we want to be heard." So, you know, it maybe needed a professional facilitator like yourself, but I think that, you know, I just want to give my neighborhood a shout-out, because that's why it was full.
They are not going to be forgotten.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions? Thanks, Dottie. In advance.
Dottie Denovia, Precinct 4. If I ask for some help here, a suggestion, because many, many people say, "I wasn't aware of the meeting." What do they call that, it's on wheels, and it's lit up and with the arrow, and it says, you know, "Happy festive holidays, et cetera, et cetera." Come on, Mr. Callow, help me out.
Traffic warning sign type of thing.
The billboard. What is that called?
Electronic billboard.
Yeah, electronic billboard.
Thank you. My suggestion would be, when you have important meetings, i.e. it's tonight, why don't you set that up, like, say, of the Sunday, and allow Sunday and Monday, people coming home from work, coming over the bridge, and there's a visible announcement, along with people like myself that put it in Facebook and et cetera. That would be one of my suggestions.
That sounds like a good idea.
My second suggestion is, you give a certain amount of money every year on a tax reduction, and you get some very good volunteers, I've been a part of that in the past. You're talking about personnel. I would think that if you could either extend that program, or if you could extend the time and the volunteer, there are old seniors like myself who are a little, well, they've got a little bit left, you know, so to speak, and maybe we could go down, say, three days a week, or two days a week, and go to a varying department and do some sundry work in a volunteer basis, and maybe then it would be, "Okay, fine, we'll throw a little dinner party at the end of the year in appreciation." I mean, that would be a community coming together to help in a sundry manner.
Absolutely, I agree with you. You know, we have a good senior, thank you, Dottie. We have a senior work-off program. I would like to explore how we deploy some of the seniors, because, you know, I don't want you picking up the compost from place to place, like, I don't want you picking up leaves and stuff like that, but...
Your leaves.
Maybe you could have helped with that one. But no, it's, you know, seniors can come and help, and what I want to try to do is work with department heads, so we have defined projects that we have kind of set number of hours that would be helpful. So, if we're looking to archive a large amount of information, the scanning project, those, like, moving stuff around that makes it easier for the people who are inside the office, it's some work that I would rather have them not dedicated to, but it's a great senior work-off type of thing. So, I'm working with Kathy about that, and we're talking about different ways to work with the department heads to kind of spread the wealth, and look to department heads to say, "I know you got five filing cabinets there that you haven't looked at in 10 years, what is it going to take to clean them up?" And those are the types of things that I'd love to have seniors come help us out with. So, point well taken, I would like to explore that program more. And actually, with the first one, if you want to put a flashing billboard that says, "It's the Austin Show tonight" on the edge of town, so everyone can see it, I would be more than happy to let you do that, and I will send an email to Steve about that. But some of the more boring meetings that I have, when we're talking about the tax rate and stuff like that, if people want it, I mean, we can explore those types of things. But I am looking for better ways to communicate things to the facility, or to the community, not necessarily like a reverse 911, but how can we push out some of this information? And one of the things that, one of the first things that Dave did was go towards reactivating our Twitter account, because I think that's a part of the population that isn't going to, isn't being hit through the Facebook, and it's basically, I want less of a conversation and more of just pushing out information from our office, and that's an easy way to do that. But it's not just phone, computer-based things, it's figuring out how do we better communicate with the paper, how do we put information out there publicly, how do we fly our houses and things like that. So, people don't come to me saying that, "I never heard about this." And some of these things, I'm going to flood people with information, because it's just going to be, I'm going to give you more information until people tell me to stop. But it's also having Dave available in the Center Business District, so that, you know, someone misses him one Tuesday, the next week will be there again, and you can have the same conversation that you wanted to.